Recording in progress.
Good evening. This is a work session of the Greenbelt City Council. My name is Emmett Jordan. I'm the mayor.
Silky Pope, council member.
Danielle McKinney, council member.
Jenny Pompey, council member.
Rodney Roberts, city council.
Amy Niesel, council member.
And Mayor Pro Tim Weaver is on travel tonight. Any information items, discussion items for the end of the meeting? Well, hearing none. We hold council work sessions on Mondays, Wednesdays, several times a month to exchange information with community stakeholder groups or gather information from staff, advisory boards, residents. No votes or formal actions are taken at our work sessions. The work sessions and our meetings are always open to the public, except for executive sessions as authorized by state laws that residents and others can observe councils deliberations. We do strive to provide a reasonable opportunity for the public to voice opinions on matters being considered. So we'll pause periodically for public comment. I imagine there's some people online. So during these times, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question from the public, just if you're in the room, raise your hand after being recognized. You can go to the podium or to the microphone. You need to state your name and where you live more or less for the minutes. If you are on Zoom, you can use the Q and A tab to submit a question, or you can raise your virtual hand. And once again, after being recognized, you would state your name and where you are living. And if you are online, if you're watching cable TV, if you're watching streaming on Facebook or YouTube, you can send an email to us at questions@greenveltmd.gov. That's the email address. So for the public comment, please limit your remarks to three minutes and speak on one topic related to the question under consideration. We ask that you avoid questioning the motives of others. And in general, we're all neighbors, so please be civil in your comments. So this is a very special work session night. We've got an opportunity to sit and talk with Dr. House, who is the superintendent of the Prince George's County School System. Dr. House, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. It's great to see all the council and yourself.
Yeah, we appreciate you taking the time to come and speak with us. We had a work session with you a little bit more than a year ago. And there are just so many things going on in the world and so many things that are affecting our young people in the school system. It is very, very important. We really just appreciate having an opportunity to talk with you. And you brought a few friends along with you as well, your staff. So we've got about 10 people here from the public schools. So thank you so much for all you do. It's been about a year and a half, how, since you came over, a year, two years almost, since you joined the school system as superintendent.
It has been about about 18 months since my arrival. And again, good evening to everyone, especially council members. I think we have the same lineup from last year. So I know the work that you do is consistently important. And the work that we do is just as important in terms of how we focus our efforts on educating children. Mayor, I want to thank you for the opportunity to really update you on some key developments in the Prince George's County Public Schools. The city of Green Belt, of course, is a valued partner in everything that we do. And our mission continues to be to appreciate the opportunity to engage like this. When I saw you at the Chamber event and you extended the invite, we were excited about the opportunity to bring out our team and share. I'd like to start out sharing some insights around our commitment to safe and inclusive environment around the district. You mentioned a little while ago that there's a lot going on in the world. And our job is to ensure that we meet our community and meet our kids where they are. As you know, PG CPS is one of the most diverse school districts in the area, quite frankly, in the nation. With students representing 150 countries and speaking more than 100 languages. And we're committed to ensuring that all students, quite frankly, feel safe. I say all the time, if students are not okay between the ears, then they're not going to give you everything that they can academically. So we're committed to ensuring that we serve the whole child. Now, in response to concerns that have been brought up surrounding the national immigration policies and changes, we've established a federal transition task force to monitor policy shifts, as well as provide the clear guidance to our school leaders. We've put together a really solid immigration task force website, resource website, that really allows for the community, not just individuals that are in the immigrant community, but the community as a whole to understand what we're doing. Our new resource website is very substantial. There's a lot of information there. So this immigration resource hub, as we call it, on the PG CPS webpage, provides additional support for students and families that are navigating, you know, all the different questions and lack of understanding that many may have. Now, one of the things that's come up is, and questions that I continuously get, is, you know, are kids coming to school? You know, those students that are not English speakers, are they coming to school? Is it an issue? And despite the concerns about student absenteeism due to the heightened immigration-related fears, our data shows that chronic absenteeism is really trending down. So that's a great thing. It kind of shows that, you know, there is a safe environment that our students feel is a part of this school district and they're coming to school. Now specifically, as we talk about our multilingual learners, they continue to attend school at a consistent rate. And quite frankly, we've not seen a significant increase in student withdrawals either. Now, as I mentioned earlier, it's important for students to be okay from a mental health standpoint. And we continue to prioritize mental health supports for our students, including the expanded school-based mental health services that we're providing with the recent $25 million grant to increase access to health centers. Now Hazel Health is a partnership that we've also moved forward with, which provides mental health support and teletherapy to students both in school and out of school. So regardless of whether they're in the walls of the school or at home, they can access this mental health support free of charge. Now, financial and enrollment considerations. Like all districts, quite frankly, across the country and across Maryland, we closely monitor the changes in student enrollment. As funding for FY26, as we've talked about, Mayor, will be, you know, will be based on enrollment as of September 30th. And that's an important date for 2024. That's the date that everything is calculated. Now, while it's too early to determine the long-term impacts, we're preparing for potential shifts in federal funding. Quite frankly, there are a lot of I don't knows as of yet. There's been a lot thrown out there, but not specific guidance to go along with what it looks like. But our job is just to be prepared for whatever is coming down the pipe. Now, I do want to share some things that I think are extremely important in terms of successes that we've seen since the last time we've been here. I want to, you know, I want to close with really the kind of encouraging news that I think we all need to hear. A lot of times in public education, we hear about the things that are negative, the things that we don't want to hear. But this year, we saw some significant gains. Specifically, I'll start off with the graduation rates. Among particular groups that historically have faced some major challenges, we've seen some improvement that I think the community will be interested in. As we look at Hispanic student graduation rates, it increased by more than 10 percentage points from 59.7% to 71.3%, reflecting major progress for this growing population that we're seeing across Maryland, specifically in Prince George's County, which has the largest ML population in the state. Now, English learners saw an even greater increase from 52% graduation to 60, almost 67%, a nearly 15 percentage point jump. Now, overall, we saw a 6% increase in graduation rates as a result of the targeted support, increased academic interventions, and the focus on keeping students on track for graduation. Now, in my opinion, our data suggests that a reduction in the number of immigrant students enrolling at late ages. And that's important to know. If you have a student that is immigrant and it's coming in second semester, 11th grade, we know the hill is going to be taller to climb, to get them where they need to be. If they're entering school at 14 or 15 and have a much higher likelihood of graduating. But if they're coming in 16, 17, 18, it becomes even that much more difficult. So, and in closing, before I bring on one of my colleagues, I want to move forward to ensure that Green Belt understands that we're committed, you know, to the academic excellence, to ensure that our students are successful throughout the school district, especially in Green Belt. I know that there are many specific questions regarding facility, facility use, building updates, district staff. And I have my team here to really share some of those details and address any concerns or questions that we might have. But before we do that, I'd like to ask my chief accountability officer. Doug is here with us, Dr. Doug Strater. He's going to share a short presentation in reference to some of the data that I think will be interesting for you all to learn about.
Dr. Strater?
Good evening, everyone. So there are some slides available to you. They're on paper there, as well as we've shared. We have a thumbs up on making that available. Excellent. All right. So I just want to spend some time. We had some questions that were shared with us regarding academic achievement of the schools included within the Green Belt municipality area. I must say that initially I focused on the initial five schools that we'll talk about here, but then I believe there was a subsequent question about Magnolia. We can get to that. I can field those questions. If not, I can get back to you in writing on that. But just very quickly, we can go through these slides. If you transition to the next slide, please. Okay. So what we wanted to do is provide a heat map of the density of where our students are in Prince George's County throughout the school district, the county as a whole. The map on your left side, again, yellow is the most dense, focusing back to the green and bluish areas. So you can see where our greatest density is. To the right is focusing specifically on the boundaries, the Green Belt municipality boundaries, just to give you an idea of where, again, the concentration of students are. I'm transitioning. Next slide, please. So on this slide, I'm just sharing the boundaries of the five schools that we included that were in question. You can see the elementary boundaries here on your left side, followed by middle and the center and high school. The reason why I wanted to include this slide is because the school's boundaries aren't necessarily kept within the municipality. So the schools that are physically located here, their school boundaries extend beyond the municipality. So that's why I wanted to share that, just so you could see. And if there's any questions about the boundaries, you have those in front of you here.
So what's your question?
Large number of our Green Belt residents' elementary school attend Magnolia, which is just outside of our boundaries.
Yeah, that's, and you can see that on the right side there. I did include the Magnolia boundary, you can see. Although the school does fall outside of the boundary, you are correct. You can see that green section there that's included within that boundary. So I could see why, you know, you wish to focus on that. And we can get to that. Okay, next slide, please. So I just wanted to give overall student counts and trends, so you can see the populations, the student populations here. For the most part, fairly stable over the last three years. No major surprises here. But what we do see within our district, one of the greatest impacts to our district is the influence of our multilingual populations. And in this district, it is very diverse. I'm going to bring that up when we get to each of the individual schools' data. But I'll just share with you the range of the multilingual influence within our schools. Spring Hill Lake is roughly 50% multilingual students. In other words, every one in two students is learning to speak English. That ranges, so that has the highest percentage. Down to the lowest percentage, Eleanor Roosevelt High School is at 10%. So one in 10 students there are learning to speak English. Still very high compared to the state. But again, it's, that will have an influence when we're taking a look at what we would expect academic achievement will look like for each of these schools. So next slide, please. The next two slides, this Maryland State's, this slide here is called the Maryland State Report Card. And it's just giving you some basic information on overall state performance and how the state achieved its targets for this year. I also included on the next slide, go ahead and transition, this is the district summary. Yep, if you can advance to the next one, please. And then we're going to get to Dora Kennedy. Next slide. So the overall story from the state, when you're looking at the state assessment results for this past year, that's the Maryland Comprehensive Assessment Program, the results were very flat in both ELA and mathematics. The state did not move much in either direction, and the district pretty much mimicked that behavior, the same behavior. There were slight nuances, up and downs by the grade levels, but pretty much we called this a psychometric flat year. There wasn't much significance going either direction. So I just wish to share that, but you can see that in the prior two slides, but I just want to keep us moving. So now I'm going to outline the performance for the five schools with a focus on, you can see the ELA and the math performance on each of these slides. And I can talk very briefly about this. So the first school, looking at Dora Kennedy French Immersion, this is their school report card on the right side. And on the left side at the top, you can see, here's their ELA performance. Their ELA, they came in in school year 24 at 71.8%. This is considerably higher than a state average of 47.2%. So high performing on both ELA and math. They're also exceeding the state average by about five percentage points. So one thing that you might wish to note, if you look at the top right corner, just under those stars, you'll find the percentile ranking of these particular schools as they compare to the state as a whole. And because Dora Kennedy is a K8 school, you'll see a percentile ranking for both its middle school component and its elementary school component. So elementary, it's in the 75th percentile of the state, and at the middle school component, it's at the 96th percentile of the state. Very high performing. So I'm just trying to give you the lay of the land. Again, 684 students, they're achieving it at a very high level. So next, Eleanor Roosevelt High School. So let's work backwards this time. So at the top right corner, you'll see in the percentile ranking across the state, they're at 58th percentile. So they're better than the average high school in the state. And you can get into the data to see the reason why. We shared earlier that they have 2,544 students enrolled. It's a very large school. When looking at the ELA performance, they're at 63.6%. The state average is 59. So they're functioning higher than the state average in both ELA. In mathematics, however, they're slightly less, although they had a significant increase this past year of 7.7%. State average is around 28%. They're at 24%. Transitioning over to Green Belt Elementary School, the next slide. At the top right, you'll see Green Belt Elementary School is at 29, they're at the 29th percentile. Both their ELA and their math scores to the left side are below the state average. So in ELA, last year, they were at 40.2%. The state average is around 46%. For mathematics, 19% versus the state average is around 30, 32%. So they're a little bit below. But it's also understanding within this school, one of the populations that's added that's beyond the municipality or its attendance area, they actually house an autism program there, which they have about 40 seats. So the school size is 531 students. And again, they have 40 additional students brought in from the surrounding attendance areas, not just the Green Belt area, for its autism program. It's a very good program. But that autism and that increased number of special ed students also has an impact on achievement, as well as understanding how this influences the state ratings. On the bottom left corner, you'll see that this school is identified as a targeted support and improvement school based on the special ed performance of that school. So they've been identified as what we call an ATS I school, which means they go through additional school performance planning, additional resources are dedicated to the school to support from the curriculum instruction office, the SE office, and so forth, to try to prevent them from entering the next level of support, which is the CSI label. So they are currently labeled as an ATS I, additional targeted support school. And again, we're moving forward to try to keep them out of that designation moving forward. So moving right along, Green Belt Middle School, population again, 1,270 students. The percentile ranked top right, they're 47th percent. So they're right there in the middle of all the other middle schools across the state. They too, they're right near the averages, the state averages in both ELA performance and math performance. So they're just under what the average state performance is. And something to note with this particular school is, they also have a special education program there. It's called the Community Reference Instructional Program. This is for the most needy students. These are the students that are on alternative diploma track. So there's roughly 50 students in this program, so it's a significant kind of student. So again, that also impacts, you know, the school as a whole. But just to give you some idea of the school.
Sorry, but isn't Green Belt Middle also a tag school, a tagged and gifted?
Yes, it does have a population of tag students there as well.
Do you know what that population is, the population of tagged and gifted?
I do not have that offhand, but I can get it for you. Okay. So transitioning to the next. We have Spring Hill Lake Elementary School. Okay. This school is the school I'd like to spend a little bit more time on, because this is one of the more challenged schools within the district. They are ranked, if you look at the top right, they're in the 13th percentile of the state. But we must understand, the state rankings, and when we look at performance within the state, one of the challenges that we have is the state average multilingual population. So when you're looking at the state as a whole, is 13%. The school's at 50% multilingual. So if students are struggling to learn to speak English, that's going to have an impact on their English and math performance. So a lot of resources, there's a lot of dedication here to support this school. So this is going to have an impact. We see this. This school also has a CRI program. This is a program, again, of the students' most profound needs. They have 60 students that are enrolled in this program. So out of a school of 804 students, you know, that is also going to have an impact on the school. So looking over the data, you can see it here on the left side, ELA performance is around 21%. They had a slight increase this year. State average is around 45%. Mathematics, they're at 5.4%, slight decrease this past year. The state average again is around 30, 35%. So I just wanted to give you an overall understanding, overview of these schools, the directions that they're headed. And again, the only school with that designation of additional supports is that ATS I school, which would be your Green Belt Elementary School. So with that, if you have any questions about these and/or specific to Magnolia, please share those and I can see what I can do on the spot and/or return your questions in writing.
I definitely appreciate the update. The schools in Green Belt, the city of Green Belt, we are passionate about education and doing everything that we possibly can to work with the public schools, our parents, government as a whole. We are committed to doing everything that we can to support you as you focus on education, teaching the young people. One thing that strikes me, just in looking at these numbers and thinking about where we are, we're still bouncing back from COVID. And a lot of impacts on reading comprehension and math from those years when everyone was remote. So while some of these trends are alarming, seems that we are making progress.
Absolutely. I think the, as Dr. Strater indicated, not only have we dealt with the kind of post-COVID catch-up game that a number of school districts across the country are dealing with, we're also dealing with something that's a little bit different in Prince George's County, which is this extreme growth of ML students. A lot of people don't realize that 40% of the students in Prince George's County are of Latino descent. Now, that is not our entire immigrant population, and that's a misconception. There's a larger immigrant population, but I think it's important to understand the makeup. And as I indicated earlier, especially when you talk about those students that are coming in late, 15, 16, 17, 18 years old in the game, we still have to welcome them in. We still have to ensure that we provide them with the educational tools to be successful. But in many cases, we are playing the catch-up game in those instances. So did want to indicate that. Mr. Roberts?
Are you saying that those kids that come in at 15 or 16 or whatever, haven't been to school before?
That's, not necessarily, it could be the case. Various levels, various levels. So not any one family, one kid is on a particular level. But our job is to take them where they are, assess where they are, assess what those needs look like, and try to meet them where they are. But the needs are, quite frankly, all over the place, depending on the experiences that that family's had, the travels, whether that family has had schooling or not. Many of them come in doing extremely well and some don't.
You know, when I look at the schools and visit the schools, I was over at Spring Hill Lake Elementary School yesterday, reading to a couple of classes, and one of them, I think, was special needs students, right?
Yeah, the mix.
Yeah, but that's the future in these students. You know, they'll be in middle school, they'll be in the high school. So it's sort of like looking at the future as you go in and interact with these young people. I believe Councilmember Niesel was first, and McKinney?
I just had a question going back to the middle school math performance. What is the state average for that? I didn't quite catch. Because I was under the impression that it was in the 30s, and you said that Green Belt Middle School was just under, which I would argue it's not at 18%. So that's my first question. My second question is, I appreciate that it's been a flat year. That's better than a loss. How does this performance track over five years? Where are we as it pertains to doing any sort of catch-up from COVID? Have we seen any market increases?
Okay, so the first question regarding performance, the average for the state of Maryland, if you wish to write these down for elementary, for the state of Maryland, 34.8% in mathematics. Middle school's 21%, high school 29.8%. Do you want them for ELA as well?
Oh, no, no, I wrote the rest down. Thank you.
Okay, okay, very good. As far as what we're seeing from COVID, it's been very interesting looking at the research associated with this, because there's a lot of variables that impact this. One of the greatest variables, again, that impacted our district, when we're looking at the data related to COVID, was the impact on our immigration, because immigration has a huge impact on our overall performance within this district. Superintendent House mentioned the impact on our grad rate. So when we look at the performance, one of the issues that we have is separating out that variable from the rest of the variable. And one of the ways of doing that is if we look at our other most dominant population, this district is primarily African-American, which is 51%, and Hispanic, which is a little over 40%. So those are our two major groups. So sometimes it's easier to look at the other group. We look at the non-ML Hispanic groups, and we also include our Black African-American groups. And we're trying to follow those two groups through the COVID years. And the very interesting piece about this is, we're not seeing much decline or any type of slide due to COVID within those two groups within this district. Now, year one, there was a slight blip because we went to the online schooling and the transition and so forth. But our data is actually different than the state's data with the COVID slide piece, which is very interesting. If we look at our summer school programs, if we look at everything that we've done to try to transition that COVID piece, we're just not seeing it, including within our grad rate. Within our grad rate, you're going to hear about, as Superintendent House shared, when you look at the grad rates, the state went up 1.8%. We went up nearly 6%, 5% change. Much of the state's increase was due to our population of students here. Of the 700-plus students that the state had, extragraduates across the state, over, I think it was 258 of those students were ours that contributed. Now, so again, we're not seeing our, although across the state, our Black African-American group, they slid slightly at the state level, had a slight decrease in the graduation rate. And Prince George's County Public Schools, our rate went up a little bit. So our trends have been a little different than the rest of the state. But again, our populations are very unique and different than the rest of the state. So that's the one thing that we have to keep in mind when we try to look into comparisons, comparing our data versus other school data. That's why we really try to get down to what student group are you interested in? Let's see if we can compare that student group to the other student groups that are similar across the state, instead of just looking at populations as a whole.
I think one other important data fact that school districts, urban school districts across the country take a close look at is overall enrollment as well, and what it's looked like over the course of the last three years. Of course, that drives the fiscal opportunities for school districts. And it's been interesting being and watching the data in Prince George's County, because we're at about a little over 100 and 30. And it's been interesting being and watching the data in Prince George's County, which we're at about a little over a hundred and thirty-two thousand students overall. And we haven't seen a huge variation of of what that's looked like either. And in my previous school district, we're close to two hundred thousand students. And the interesting thing is there was a huge loss of students post-COVID, like twenty thousand students. So that could be because of our ML growth. It could be, you know, several different things. But there has been some stability in knowing that there hasn't been a huge variation of overall enrollment.
Councilmember McKinney?
Thank you. I have two questions. The first is related to, I know that our population is also, at least here in Greenbelt, is fairly mobile transient. I'm wondering if you have data that shows like the number of days that they're actually enrolled in school and how that compares to their performance. So we hear that, you know, they may move into the district, they move may move out, but then they may have less time actually getting instruction. So do you, are you able to do that kind of comparison to see if there is an impact on on the school's performance? And then my second question, related, is are you able to also track whether or not there's been an increase in the number of students seeking like mental health assistance? So I'm also wondering, going to your point about COVID, I know that there has also been a rise in the number of just needs that students would require for that. And I'm also wondering if you've seen an increase in that.
To to just start on your second question, I'll let Dr. Strader answer the first one. But in terms of the trends in reference to mental health supports, one of the easiest data points for us to to track is is what we're doing with our telehealth. We know exactly how many how many students have accessed our Hazel Health telehealth. We also know how many students have accessed support through all of our providers. So that is data that we're tracking. One of the things that we tried to do in comparison to last year moving into this year is to make certain that we promoted the opportunity that existed around supports that we had. We did see an increase in terms of those utilization of those supports. And it's something that we want to continue to promote. Again, students that are not okay are not going to be able to provide you with their best self in the classroom. So it's it's important for us to provide those supports as we move forward.
I I wanted to to follow up on the point about truancy and absenteeism in the schools. At one point, I guess, last year, I believe I heard the statistic that sixty, seventy percent of the students in Prince George's County were were out of school more than two weeks. Is is that right? Yeah, I heard some disturbing numbers about truancy and absenteeism. And and we see that sometimes, particularly around the high school, around the middle school, not so much. But I'm just wondering, are there some strategies that seem to be working to to actually make sure that students, when they come to school, they stay in school?
We we definitely have have moved forward with a few partnership strategies to to ensure that we see the kind of growth in and around absenteeism that we want to see. In fact, this year alone, we've seen an over three percent growth in the right direction. And that exceeded the the goal that that we had for this year. So we definitely have things moving in the right direction in terms of making certain students are are in school that so that we can educate them. So our high schools are moving. Dr. Liz Faison is our Associate Superintendent for Student Services and really does, she's here and and does quite a bit of work in and around what that looks like. So things are trending in the right direction.
It's good to hear. We've got a couple of questions. I don't know if anybody's online.
Nobody online.
Ask questions. But before we go to questions, do you, would you like to say anything about the the budget? You said that you're currently finishing up work sessions before the the school budget goes to the county council?
You said it well, Mayor. We tomorrow evening will, our board will host the third work session. And while we we know that, you know, every entity across the state has has seen its challenges, that's no different in Prince George's County. We were tasked to to really make up a close to thirty-seven million dollar deficit as time moved forward over the course of the last few months. That turned into a about a eighteen million dollar deficit as as more funds came in. So our task, moving into this last work session, is to close that gap. And we feel like we we have a path, and we look forward to to sharing that path with our board and the community tomorrow evening.
Let's pause. Do you have a question, Mr. Goldberg Strasslin? Robert, could you speak into the microphone a little bit, maybe?
Some enchanted evening. Okay. Dr. House, I just want to focus in on the high school graduate level. You went from fifty-two percent, I may have the numbers wrong, to about sixty-seven percent. What do you attribute that success to? And then my jumping to the thirty-three percent that didn't graduate, how many of those, that percentage are ML students? And then what do you do for those thirty-three percent? I don't know the number of high school graduates total in the county. But if you're saying it's ten thousand graduates, probably more, you're talking about thirty-three hundred students that are not, what happens to those students? What are you doing for their, those students or are they lost?
So what I will say, and I'll I'll let Dr. Strader, our Chief of Accountability, to share some of the specifics around data. But our roadmap has has been, of course, not only the the blueprint, but also our T26, which are, which is our strategic plan. And in that strategic plan and and the blueprint, there are specific things that we're focused on, specific pillars in the blueprint, whether it be early childhood, whether it be ensuring that we have enough educators in specific places to ensure that they can teach, which a lot of people don't realize, there is still a major shortage in in public education in terms of teachers. I shared with with you earlier that one of the things that we just kicked off this past Friday was an advertisement campaign for federal workers that would like to transition into education. So we have a number of positions. So so various, you know, various different things that we've we focused on. Individual schools have roadmaps that they put together specifically at their schools, depending on what the needs are. So if there was a particular school, then we'd be glad to to share what what one of those plans look like, looks like. But but we've really ensured that we focused on what it is for schools to provide great feedback to teachers, ensuring that the fidelity of whatever it is that we're implementing is something that is keenly focused on as well. So we've utilized our monthly principals meetings, it's almost mini conferences, to ensure that we take a close look at the data, ensure that that data is aligned with what our needs are, and to drive that home on a monthly basis. So so we've been very intentional about what that looks like, and we're excited to continue that work.
What do you do with the people that, the thirty-three percent, those students?
So we 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 continue the work in terms of whether it be, you know, remediation, focusing our efforts on absenteeism as well. That's, again, a a big challenge that a number of our schools still deal with, even though we've seen some improvements. We also, on the on the special education end, we we've seen some challenges there in terms of the number of educators that we're able to to find that are qualified to be in classrooms. So we're doing quite a few things in reference to grow your own. There are not enough educators that are out there, quite frankly. And so what we've learned is that we have to partner with agencies, universities. I think we've got about nine of them that we're partnering with to bring in as many educators that might be paraprofessionals, teacher assistants, that we can actually have them walk into programs and and be certified educators over the course of a short period of time.
So do you also know the person? Hang on just a second, just a second, it'll take two seconds. All right, I see. He took up much, most of that time. No. As far as that thirty-three percent, do you have any idea what percentage of them are ML?
Dr. Strader?
So the the numbers, I'm getting kind of lost in the thirty-three percent. So the grad, the graduation rate for the state is at eighty percent, I mean, for the district is at eighty percent. For the overall population, increased by six percentage points. I believe you're referencing the Hispanic population. That was fifty-nine point seven, bumped up to seventy percent. So that's the thirty percent that you're talking about?
Okay, not quite.
Twenty-nine, yes, just slightly less, okay.
One brief question. Do you see any boundary changes happening?
Boundary changes? I don't believe we are looking at boundary changes for for this coming year. And I apologize for taking so much of your time.
Dr. House, you you mentioned just doing outreach to to displace the federal workers to 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 find out if there's a a place for them in Prince George's County schools as educators or administrators. And you you know, there's a Congressman Ivy is holding a resource fair along with County Council Chair Ivy on Saturday from ten to twelve over at Greenbelt Middle School. Are you aware of that, or will you have some folks there?
Excellent. We we have our our communications team in the House, and if it's not something that we've had on the radar, it's on the radar now.
Fantastic, fantastic. So at this time, I think we have a few specific questions that we want to kind of delve into. And one has to do with a shared use of facilities. Prince George's County Schools, athletic fields, the buildings, constantly a program scoring on with the community, with the private organizations. So in Greenbelt, the city of Greenbelt, we we are very, very proud of the fact that our recreational amenities are, the goal is to have a playground within walking distance of every child who lives in the city of Greenbelt. And we really strive to have fields, athletic fields, that are available to to our residents in all parts of the city. And one, one area of the city that's challenged somewhat is the western part of the city. So for some time, we we've tried to get a dialogue going and actually tried to get something on paper, some sort of an agreement where where perhaps the city could have access to the athletic fields over at Greenbelt Middle School. And, you know, in exchange for that, you know, we may be able to to provide some maintenance, city manager somewhere on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We just looked at our federal yearmarks process and projects, and one of the things we considered, Dr. House, was applying for federal yearmarks to restore the the fields. And this is a conversation that took place several years ago, prior to your time, prior to my time, that one of the, one of the barriers to sharing the fields was that they were not in the conditions that we needed them to be for for the sports that were considered there. So we looked at, in short, for this round of federal yearmarks, we considered applying for funding to restore those fields. We have hit some roadblocks. The applications have not been submitted yet, but some of the concerns that came up as we were reviewing the applications were whether, whether, one, it would score high on the on the criteria for the federal yearmarks, whether we had control of the field. So there are a lot of things unknown that perhaps we need to have a deeper dive on to work collaboratively to find a way to restore those fields. Because one of the barriers for us taking them over were that the fields needed to be put in shape for us to make use of them. We would take over the maintenance once all the restoration work was done. I understand that the the school district challenges around playgrounds and and athletic fields are widespread. So this might not be at the top of the list, but we welcome an opportunity to collaborate with you on finding solutions for restoring those fields.
Well, you you said it well. My my chief fabric and officer, Dr. Shirazka Coleman, is here, but you you expressed it well. There's quite a bit of deferred maintenance across the district. A lot of you may not realize that the Prince George's County has the oldest, or I think the second oldest portfolio of facilities in the state of Maryland. So the the task at hand is vast, and we prioritize, you know, different projects. And sometimes fields and sometimes playgrounds don't outweigh HVAC or plumbing or some of the things that we're dealing with. But what I will say before Dr. Coleman jumps in is that we're open to to having that conversation. I do realize and know that the criteria that's probably laid out in this opportunity can be challenging, given the the condition of of the given school that we're talking about. But we're open to the the conversation. Dr. Coleman?
Excellent. Dr. Coleman, before you jump in, if I may add one more thing, because I think it might be relevant to your points. We did look at other district facilities. We looked at the the playground at the Greenbelt Elementary School. The, if you are familiar, Dr. Coleman, with the property, the rear and the field has some challenges. So we are vetting a project of, that will cost around a quarter of a million dollars, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, to restore some of the play space at the rear of the property and some of the retaining walls. So we're adding that project to a whole list of playground facilities in the city that if we can group them together, they would be eligible under the federal yearmarks program, so totaling about a million dollars. The application, again, hasn't been submitted yet. We're vetting it. We have sent it off to the federal, federal delegation consultant. There's a staff members at the team that we get to vet ideas through, Ethan, a few others. So we're vetting five projects, and based on their preliminary evaluation, we'll come back to council with the list and say, hey, this is our recommendation, and we'll get council's input on those things.
Yeah, and as a long-serving council member, I'm interested in finding a way to kind of move beyond this point. You know, we have a good relationship with the middle school and Dr. Clement. There seems to be an openness to to a partnership. We're getting something going. We've been talking, Councilmember Pope, who was a a teacher there at Spring Hill Lake Elementary School, how long have we been talking about this?
We've been talking about this for a long time, many years, through several superintendents, I think.
Yeah, who's three?
You're number three. So all good things come in three.
Lucky, lucky number three.
Lucky number three, there you go. So I understand the challenges you have with plumbing because it's Spring Hill Lake Elementary. Of course, we are a very old building, and we certainly look forward to, I think, one more year in this building, and then and then we'll we'll get a new school building. Everybody's looking very much forward to to that project because that's been on the, you know, on the, on the table for a long time as well. And and I do hope the funding's still there, so last time I heard it is. But so I understand your challenges, and I understand the challenges with the fields as well. But but we do, we do strive to really partner with all of our schools in in our boundaries. And so it, I think it's, you know, and now with the budget, with the budget shortfall, of course, this is, again, bad timing. But I think we need to start, we really need to start getting this ball rolling and looking down the future, you know, what can we do in the future? What can we do short term? And what can we do, what does it look like in the next five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten years? I think that's important because our population here in the city is also growing. We're having more projects coming in, more developments coming in. So we need to look in the future and start now.
So so Dr. Coleman, how can we kind of move this forward a little bit further than where we are now? You know, this partnership or an MOU would actually benefit the school because the the field would be more usable for the students that are there now.
It would. And thank you so much, Mayor, for the opportunity to address this. I did want to start off, very familiar with Greenbelt Elementary School. Both of my children attended Greenbelt Elementary School, so definitely familiar with that facility. So we are, as Superintendent House shared, very open to looking at a potential partnership through an MOU that looks at how we can better maintain the fields while also providing that space for your residents. Prince George's County Public Schools has, as a matter of fact, already entered into something like this, MOU for maintenance with the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning. In 2023, we entered into a joint, joint-use MOU with Park and Planning that's going to be implemented over a three-phase, stick, three phases, one each year. Phase one includes our eleven artificial turf fields at our high schools. Phase two is going to include a negotiated, agreed-upon set of additional schools. And it'll also include moving both outside and inside, fields and gymnasium spaces. And then phase three will expand even more based on the negotiated spaces. And as a part of that project, the MOU also dictates that the maintenance of those fields and facilities will then shift to the responsibility of Park and Planning. So to your point, we're open to, you know, entering into discussions around what this could look like with the city of Greenbelt. Because what I also know from recent conversations with Park and Planning is that no one has an unlimited budget, right? And so when we're talking about maintaining the number of fields that we have in a Prince George's County, it's a massive amount of, of capital that's needed to do that. And so I believe that having that support from Greenbelt could lighten the load that ultimately will be Park and Planning's and certainly is ours right now. So it's just a matter of having that discussion. I would like to ask Director Stefanielli, who has at least had some history with some of the prior discussions around an M O U with the city of Greenbelt, if he wanted to say anything related to, to this possible opportunity.
Yeah, and I have to tell you, the whole Greenbelt Middle School thing, it, it keeps coming up, we work on it, we don't get it completed. The last time, we had some substantial damage to the field, I think that was caused by the construction process. It wasn't packed correctly and it was, it was near to or unsafe to play on. And that kind of stopped our conversation. That's been corrected now, but we never started that up again. I have to tell you, we are, we would love to join with you in, in this process, what you're looking for. Not only Greenbelt Middle School and Rallinale Roosevelt, those two fields are our athletic fields. We maintain them as athletic fields because we have sports in the school. All the other fields, the elementaries, we maintain them as green space or just play areas. So there is no, we don't maintain a baseball field at Greenbelt Elementary or Spring Hill Lake, but we maintain the grass. Those are opportunities where, like you said, with Greenbelt Elementary, we have this large green space within your area that you could take advantage of. The city of Bowie and the city of Laurel, we have a couple of schools that their boys' club wants to use or one of their recreational councils in the city has come in, took an elementary school, created a, there's a backstop there, but just grass. They created a baseball diamond and they maintained it for their boys' club. And the school gets the benefit of using that as well. And all the schools that we were talking about earlier, we have the ability to do that there. We're willing to partner with you because it's a benefit to us as well as you. And as my office handles facility use and our goal is that the schools in Greenbelt are used by the kid, the organizations in Greenbelt, the schools in College Park, we want that to rain as local as possible. So even though we have this partnership with Maryland Park and Planning, they are willing, I'm sure, to share that responsibility with Greenbelt, with College Park, with Laurel, because you're closer to the issue and you, you can maintain to make sure that your citizens get fair use of the facilities. But, so we're willing to work with you on that. We would love, love to work with you.
Excellent, I'll schedule a meeting next week and we'll
Absolutely.
hand over keys.
And I know Councilmember McKinney is passionate about
I'm not sure if it would have been quite that easy, but.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah. I, I just wanted to push a little bit harder on this because I feel like, I, I appreciate that you're open and willing to talking about it. But from what I understand, this has been a conversation for six-plus years. So I'm just wondering when the conversation can actually get to the next action of us being able to sign the M O U. So if that's something that is part of a conversation that can be set up soon, I think our, we're at a point where we want to do that.
We're committed to, to getting the conversation started. So while it may not be Thursday or Friday, we'll, we'll make certain to, to get it on the books.
May I just have one other question? You had mentioned the partnership with Matt, Maryland Parks and Planning. You had mentioned that they would also be working on additional fields and partnering on those turf fields and things like that. How do you prioritize those schools? Because I know that not just within Greenbelt, but also we have Greenbelt residents that go to other schools that are central and close to Greenbelt, so that are also in need. So how does that happen and how are you prioritizing those schools?
I'm talking about the priority for receiving an artificial turf field. Okay, our capital programs team actually does a deep dive into the data to identify a priority list around how we should address those fields as a part of our capital improvement program. And so that was established years ago and we haven't deviated from that list. And we are continuing to work our way through it with each subsequent year.
Well, thank you, thank you. There, there's another piece of school property on Mandan Road in Windsor Green. And I think there's, there's a basketball court there, it's a field, people use it for soccer. It's really not maintained, but that's another piece of property that the Board of Education, the school board actually owns in Greenbelt. And I think we maintain it a little bit, but it's right there.
I think we do.
Yeah, on Orglin.
Yeah. Lot of, lot of soccer games going on.
So, so let's move this conversation forward and beyond a conversation.
We can do so, absolutely.
And speaking of conversation, let's, I want to shift the topic and talk a little bit, get an update on the progress of the Spring Hill Lake Elementary School building project, making sure that it's still, you know, on board, still going to happen next year.
Absolutely, I'm going to invite Sean Matlock to, to the microphone, share a little bit about Spring Lake and, and the progress thus far.
Doctor Matlock, thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Thank you very much. I think I, we have a presentation available and there we go. So, thank you for having us here again. To give you a, a feel, right now, I want to go over the design of the facility a little bit and then give you an idea of the construction schedule and then you can ask some questions. If you go to the, the next slide, this is site, post-site plan. And as you can see down at the, in the lower, the lower right-hand corner, the, where it enters there, that's going to be your bus loop there, where buses will be able to come in. If you go further up to your, 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 further north of that, to the next entryway there, that would be where the parent drop off and pick off entry wood in the parking lot area there. And we would snake the parents who were dropping off their students through that parking lot to a drop off and then an exit. One of the reasons why we did this was to separate the bus and car traffic so that we wouldn't have any issues around that, it's a safety issue. We've also, we're in the process of, we completed recently a traffic study. And most of the students are walkers, so, you know, we, we're not anticipating any major issues around traffic associated with this school. As you can see, the, there, there are a lot of, of fields around the back areas. There are a lot of planting areas and things like that around the location. And as part of this school, one of the things that's going to happen is it's going to have geothermal. So it's going to be a very green school. So part of the plantings are there to cover some of the geothermal that we have underground. We're also going to have P Vs or, or solar panels on the roof. So it'll be heated and cooled by geothermal and it'll be provided electricity primarily through solar power. And we'll be collecting, trying to collect a lot of plants on the area that will help us with water purification and things like that, so that our stormwater management works out a lot better. Just a, a point, the, the designers for the school is Perkins Eastman and the site designer is Bradley Site Design. And so they're working on these right now. We're very early stages because this is the third la- layer of delivery. We're currently just around thirty-five, forty percent in design, but we're moving quite quickly. So to give you another feel for it, next slide, please. This is some of the plantings that we're planning to have around the school. And these are all designed to be, you know, native plantings and things like that in order to, again, bring in more wildlife, you know, birds and things like that, and also to aid with the, with the stormwater management. If you go to the next slide, you'll see some of the projected scapes that we are, are trying to look. These are just ideas about how they would be laid out and the green space around the schools. Go to the next slide. You will see the preliminary layout of the school. So this would be your, your first floor. And as you can see, these blue areas, these light gray-blue areas, these are going to be, these are classrooms. And so the way it's divided up is that we'll have our earliest learners on the first floors. And we'll have our special education students more off to the, as you can see, off to the right. And as you come in, your, your central space will be coming in through, through that area between them. And that's where your administrative spaces will be around there. And then, as you can see, you have a cafeteria space off to, in the, in the orange area, sort of like the wild orange area. You have your library area in your, in the sort of ice blue or, or light blue area. And then your gym, of course, is in the, in the lower, lower right-hand side with the, with the orange area there. So if you go to your next slide, this will be our second floor area. And as you can see, again, the oldest children will be, be up on the, on the upper level floors. These are all basically your, your teaching areas and that sort of thing. And, and that's your, your basic layout of the school. It's designed so that the, the academic areas can be cut off, can be sealed off and that the public spaces can be accessed by the public and used without having anyone having to go into the private spaces. This will also be a fairly secure school. We have, we're used, the school's being designed with Septed. It wasn't really shown there on, we're going to have fencing going around the school. And there will be a secure best-of-youle for the main entrance that if you want to enter the school, you have to go through it and then they'll take you into the office and then you'll be able to access the school. We'll also have, you know, lots of cameras and that sort of thing around the school. And, and, and so we're working on all of those things right now. If you go to the next slide, to give you an idea what the interiors might look like, this is kind of how the library area will be laid out, lots of green nooks and areas for students in the, in the media center. In the lower right-hand corner, you can see that's a mockup of what the cafeteria would look like. And as you can see, the cafeteria leads out to a stage on the backside so that it can be used by, as an amphitheater on the outside for activities and things like that, student learning and things. So there's going to be, you can use the stage on the inside or the outside. And it's organized like that to bring the indoors in, the indoors, outdoors in and, and the outdoors kind of out. We want to bring a lot of light and things to the building. If you go to the next slide, that gives you an idea of what the entrance way and what the, what you'll see when you drive up to the school. There's, the orange pieces that you see in the windows there, there are, there's a window seats, a window boxes for learning areas where children can sit in the window and read and sort of stuff and get a lot of natural light in. And as you can see, there's a very ample welcoming space coming on into the school. If you go to the next slide, you'll see the back of the school where that cafeteria is and that sort of amphitheater space on the outside with the stage there. There are also other learning areas around there, so a lot to be outdoor learning spaces and that sort of thing. So if we go to the next slide, which will give us a little bit of our schedule. So we look to start onsite demolition around August of two thousand twenty-six. That's the schedule that we had and I checked with our builders, we're still on schedule as far as everything's concerned. We think we'll, we'll have site work start around November of two thousand twenty-seven. Superstructure in, start around March of two thousand twenty-seven. And then the building envelope should be up by, by, by June of two thousand twenty-seven. Start the building systems by August of two thousand twenty-seven. We want to start on finishes in that winter of two thousand twenty-eight. And then we should be finished and ready for inspections by June with the project ready for, for occupation by July of two thousand twenty-eight. That's the general schedule that we have right now. And in relationship to that, as you can see here, that's where the school sits now, oh, next slide, I'm sorry. If you can see here, that's where the school sits now, that's basically the site as it is right now. And that's the part, the parts in the red will be the parts that will be initially demolished. There'll be a, a barrier put up around the, the entire property. There'll be monitors put up so for vibration. There'll also be dust detection to make sure that we don't have any air dust or issues like that that could be a nuisance to the neighborhood. We don't know fully yet on any requirements that we're going to have for, for stormwater management out to the street. We have, in some cases, been required to do additional stormwater management because of the area. And so there, there may be some improvements that Deepi requires. We're, we're waiting to get back answers on that. So there may be a little disruption away from the campus, but that will be, if, by requirements by, by Deepi. Next slide. So this is what the site where the school will be massed. And so you can see the relationship to where it was before. It's a much smaller overall footprint for the building because it's stacked higher and that sort of thing. And you can see this is the work that will be done. The, the entrance ways will be on where those two yellow flags are on to the site. That's where we'll be bringing trucks in and out for, for during the construction. We're going to have ample information about that when, when things are happening on the site. We'll, we have a website already and we, we're going to commit to quarterly town hall meetings once we get to around ninety-five percent design. And, and then once we start construction, in addition to that, there's going to be a P P C that will meet quite often. Right now, bi-monthly is what we try to do, up and until we get into maybe like fifty percent of construction. And that's a local groups that will be local people, like people from the homeowners associations, teachers, principal, P T, P T A members. They get to have some input into some of the finishes designed, some tweaking about how we organize the site and move things around the site, the school, once it's in operation, tweaks we might make based on, on issues related to how the school currently operates. And then, as you can see, once that's in, next slide, I'm sorry. This will be how the, the site is, is on the, is masked on, on the site. And as you can see, we'll, we'll start bringing in more greenery and things like that over time. And you can see where the parking lot is there and, and the, and the entrance way there and also the bus loop for the school. And I, I believe that's, next slide, I think that's it, I think we're to questions now?
Yeah, that's a very attractive design. Can, can you share the, the presentation, the slides with us?
Yes, you have them, you have them.
We have those, Mr. Mayor, we can share those after the meeting.
Okay, we've got a couple of questions. I believe Councilmember McKinney, Mr. Roberts?
I just have a quick question. The last slide almost showed it, the employee parking was to the left. Okay, because you didn't mention it at the beginning when you were saying the bus and everything and that. And we have such a hard time parking right now that we're parking actually at Franklin Park. Some of us have to park over at Franklin Park and they're very kind to us. But I just want to make sure I mentioned employee parking because that's, that's a big issue.
Yeah, the educational spec that we had for it required that we have parking for all the staff. So there is ample parking for all staff and there's some visitor parking as well. So there, there, there will be spaces for every staff member.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Roberts?
Number one, I, I wasn't really clear, is this a, a single-story or a two-story building?
It's a two-story.
Two-story, okay. And my other question is, are you going to preserve the existing forested areas?
We're required to preserve as much as we can. It will replace what we take out. Now, as you can see, the footprint for the school is actually, takes up less actual green space itself. But there will be, we'll probably lose some trees, we'll try and preserve as much and whatever we take out will replace.
Well, you can't replace an existing wooded setting, you can't. You might plant a couple of trees, but you're not going to replace a wooded, a forested area.
What I mean by that is
I hope you try to preserve what's there.
Deepi won't allow us anymore to just completely wipe out. We can't like tree bank or anything anymore. So whatever we, whatever we disturb, let me put it that way, whenever we disturb, we will replace.
I would think you could do a good job because as you say, the building is smaller. So I'm hoping you don't have to really go back all the way in the back and cut it down.
With temporary, temporary's gone and it's going to create a lot more space anyhow. But of course, the area all the way to the rear is right at the headwaters of Indian Creek. That's a sensitive area back there. Councilmember McKinney?
Well, the new building also
Well, the new building also caused you to think about the pathways from the community into the building differently. Because I know that we've had some concern with residents, the speed, wanting to put in speed bumps right there. So I don't know if the entryways will shift and if we can obviously work with you to make sure we're creating the safest pathway into the school as possible. And then my second question is then for the town halls that you mentioned doing, are you planning to have additional languages, language options? Because that community clearly has a lot of different languages spoken. So we want to make sure that we have translation services available.
We always do, as part of our process. That's usually identified by our communications department. And then we have, we've had as many as five different languages at some of our meetings.
Yeah, very good. When would you expect the public engagement to start at those town halls? This is sort of a starting point.
This is sort of a starting point. We've already had one town hall meeting back in May just to let everybody know what was kind of going on. But what will happen is as we get closer to the project getting to like roughly about, I'd say, once we get to about 65% we'll start forming our PPC, we'll have maybe one town hall to bring people up to speed. Before anybody gets moved, we want to talk about what's happening before we start swinging the kids. We want the community to know what's going on. There's also, we like to also have these meetings because we haven't gone through mandatory referral yet, so that has to happen. And we need to have a few of those before we go to mandatory referral. We also just had a traffic study that, again, that we're completing, which will talk about some of those traffic issues that you were talking about. It may require us to have some speed issues around there. As you can see, there is a change in the way you enter the, so the buses come in one way, but the cars now go a completely different way. And I think part of what we're trying to do is to cater to walkers as well by having enough locations to get onsite without having to deal with either car or bus traffic.
Councilmember Poppy?
What's going to be, first I'm going to say that the building looks great. I love the security improvements that you guys have been doing with all the new blueprint schools. I think that's fantastic. So kudos to you guys for doing that. What's the capacity of this school going to be?
I believe the capacity of the school is 650 students.
Of the school?
Yeah.
Because there are already like 800 students at Spring Hill Lake now. Less.
It's larger. It's larger. I'm sorry. So I'm defaulting to a number here in my head. So yeah, so it's, I know it's 850, I'm sorry.
What?
It's 850.
With two different plans.
Yeah. Oh, no, no temporaries at all.
I'm sorry, how many, for how many students? Eight fifty? That's going to be a little tight. I mean, considering that there's going to be a new community coming in behind Beltway Plaza.
That's right.
And, you know, I think that might be an underestimation of the attending students in that school. And that means that we're going to be, again, overcrowded in no time at all.
Well, here's, there's two problems. Number one, the school has to be managed academically. And we usually try not to keep elementary schools at more than 900 students. So that's, 900 would probably be our top end for a school. The other thing is that you've got to remember, I don't think we're counting like, I don't think we count pre-K in that number. And so I don't think pre-K gets counted into the overall SRC. So that's got to be counted. And then the other problem that you have is there's only so much you can build with our budget. We're building eight schools and there, you know, we ran up, there were some requests that were made that we met. And that had, you know, there's only so much you can build with that budget.
So are you counting pre-K? Because we have a large pre-K, a lot of little people. There are a lot of them.
There's space for them, but I don't think they count against the SRC, which is state-rated capacity.
And just, you know, as you mentioned before, we have to take everyone that comes through our doors, we're welcoming with open arms, which we have to and we should, of course. So I think, I think that is a drastic underestimation. And I really think that it's going to bring us back with temporary buildings outside in no time. So I would really ask to, and I understand budget restraints, I do understand that. But what's going to happen if we're going to end up with nine or 1,000 students? What are we going to do then? Where are we going to put that?
So let me ask that question.
Maybe you don't need, maybe you don't need 2,500 apartments next to it.
Let me go ahead and ask that question because it's something, we can't have a work session with the schools without saying, Green Belt students need to go to Green Belt schools. So as we're talking about this, if the population and with the residential development behind Beltway Plaza, at some point, the Boundary Committee, are you looking, are you able to assure us that the policy of allowing Green Belt students to attend schools that are either in or adjacent to Green Belt will stay in place? I said that tactfully because I-
We've got, we've got somebody here who wants to talk specifically about boundaries. Roderick will share some insight here.
Don't go too far, Mr. Mathis, because we're going to pivot.
I've got another question for you.
Stay close.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you.
Welcome.
My name is Roger Prince, the Director of School, Boundaries, People Accounting, and also Student Records. When you're talking about boundaries, it can be very complicated because we have to plan, you know, five to seven, eight years ahead in time. We look at various data points. And we study and look at community developments that are coming. We also look at birth rates within the county, within those particular districts. We also work very closely with our partners to ensure that when we make these decisions, when it comes to looking at boundary and looking at school overcrowding. You know, in my office, I can just go to Dr. Coleman and say, hey, I need another school. You know, as you all know, it doesn't work like that. And so we try to keep the schools at the state-rated capacity that is set by the state of Maryland. And with doing so, oftentimes, we are planning five to 70 years ahead. We're making these predictions. And so with that said, our goal and our plan in our office is to look very carefully at the data. So that new community, something I'm going to go back to my office and take a look at it. As we have done with multiple communities that are happening off 301, communities that are happening down in Brandywine, we're looking and determining, you know, and trying to predict, well, how many students are actually coming out of those communities? And with that said, oftentimes, we have to look at whether they are multifamily homes. We have to look at the price of the homes. We're seeing data that also shows that, you know, a family that purchases a home, for example, for $700,000 to $800,000, don't necessarily have two, three, to four children, you know, that will be coming to Prince George's County Public School. So again, we use those data metrics to determine, you know, how we're going to set our boundaries.
So short-term, you know, three, the next three years, with the boundary conversations that you're currently having, can you assure us that there's no shift in the boundaries for Green Bell?
I don't have that data in front of me right now to speak to it. So I don't want to speak off the top of my head. I would have to go back and actually look at that specifically with my team. And I could provide my information, where we can share that information with this board.
We'd appreciate that, Ms. Pope.
Well, there is, you know, with the new, there also is a big community where Councilmember McKinney lives, Green Bell Station. And there are a little bit more pricey homes. But there are also many children, there is a lot of smaller children. And yes, you are correct, maybe not currently, maybe currently they are not attending our school, which Spring Hill Lake Elementary School is their go-to school, actually. But with a new school coming, I think a lot more parents would be interested in shifting their children to a public school and maybe not going for the private route as they may do now. I think that's very important. So that's not, you know, Beltway Plaza is not the only community that's coming. Also Franklin Park, I mean, it, there, this is the largest apartment complex on the East Coast, or at least it was at one point. 2,800, over 2,800 apartments. There are a lot of people living there. There's a lot of children there. So if you're planning for 800, what, 850? We probably already surpassed that today by the time I left school. I mean, I'm serious.
Mr. Robertson, I want to recognize you. Mr. Roberts, go ahead.
The fact is, if you want 2,500 apartments at Beltway Plaza, you got to build another school. And Beltway Plaza is not even talking about building another school. But that's the case because you, obviously, you can't build a school big enough to carry all those kids. Look back, what, 15 years ago when Beltway, Spring Hill Lake wanted to double the size of Spring Hill Lake, going from almost 3,000 to 6,000 apartments. They were going to tear the whole place down. You might want to look back, I don't know if it's still available, but the county did a study, a school study at that time for that development and told them, you know, this amount of density will require two schools, two elementary schools. They weren't even talking about the middle school or Roosevelt because that would have increased the numbers in all of the schools, I think. But yeah, you might want to look back at that because in the end, the county, actually, the people that wanted to redevelop Spring Hill Lake, they did not want there to be a school in their community. They wanted to get rid of the elementary. They wanted the county to give them the elementary school site. And fortunately, the county said, no, we're not giving you our site. And this is what we'll need school-wise if you build this development. And you told, the county told them that you need two schools and here is how. And they estimated the cost of that at $100 million.
Would have been in 2007.
The developer was offering 20 million for schools, but they weren't willing to give up any land to build it on. So, you know, we have the same, kind of same thing going on at Beltway Plaza where they want to build this huge development of 2,500 apartments, almost as big as Spring Hill Lake, and not even have a school. This is why I voted against it time and time again.
Yeah, that would have been 2006, 2000, before I was on council, but I went to some of those shreds. Sir, you may have to push the, if you push the button on the microphone, it should click on.
A couple of clarifying points. Jason Washington, Associate Superintendent of Supporting Services. We started a work group for Phase Two, I want to say, three years ago. And so one of the things that is highlighted here that we've had a problem with is Mr. Prince has said, we don't get information about new planning developments from the planning department. So we worked on this for two years and you're telling us about new developments that were not factored in and we had the state, county, and other representatives on the work group. When we went through what schools to highlight, which schools to be part of the package, all of, we took all of the data that was available. With the 850, we had, because the county, because the state has contributed half of the availability payment, they had to approve the final sizes of the school. And so it was out of our control to say, this is what it's going to be because the state had final approval. So that 850 was a consolidation and shrinking down to meet the budget along with receiving IEC approval. Because the way that they looked at it was what was a feasible and plan and process across the portfolio of schools, looking at all of them. And so we had to reduce the square footage, I think, in all of the schools by 10%, and one school, we had to reduce the capacity by 500 students. And so this was seen across the full eight schools. And so we, one of the other limiting factors that was mentioned earlier with Spring Hill Lake is where it sits in the back of the community. We're going to be required by DEPI to put in substantial stormwater management on the backside of that. And so that limits a lot of the developable land that we would use otherwise. And so we had to balance that because we did not want to build up and we wanted to stay with the character of the community. So those were, I get the frustration around why the school is not larger and bigger, but there were other contributing factors that led to making sure that we kept the school because that was an option too. It's like, well, hey, is there another school? And we were like, no, this is part of Cycle One, this is what makes sense, balanced with the resources and the approvals that were necessary to move this project forward.
Hey, thank you, Dr. Washington. That's helpful.
Oh, not doctor, but I, that's, not that it's a bad thing, buddy, I don't know.
Councilmember Neesal, and I want to pivot and begin to talk about the transition to Dorah Kennedy next. Councilmember Neesal?
Thank you. So this is going back to the design of the school. I have a child who attends a newly developed school and it's beautiful. I love the flex spaces. I love the library. I love the huge cafeteria. They're not used. So I guess my question is, is staff and administration getting training on how to effectively and appropriately and safely use these brand-new spaces that they are not used to having? They are used to having a classroom with four walls. And so I worry that a lot of these amazing amenities are not being taken advantage of.
See, what I will say, we'd love to take a close look at exactly, you know, what you're saying. This is the first that we've heard of a school not taking advantage of new amenities. So it's something that we'll take back and take a close look at.
And one of the lessons learned is, following up with Superintendent House, is the end user. So we, I know Sean has put out surveys and will of the administration and the staff of those new schools to get that feedback that we can incorporate in as we move forward in more schools.
Okay, at this point, we'll pause for a comment from the public, a three-minute. Because we've got a lot of ground to cover and the enrollment piece is something that we didn't bring up in advance. But if you can supply us with some information on what the enrollment projections and assignments, what the discussion is, we'd appreciate that very much, Mr.-
Yeah, I just want to jump off on what Silk was saying about the parking. Will there be EV charging places? And then I'll jump further into the school climate change plan with clean schools by 2030. And I got to give kudos because Prince George's County is a model for the nation for moving forward in the sustainability monitor, Dorothy Morrison. And you indicated in the design about the geothermal, which is one indication. So way to go. Thank you very much.
And to add to that, the, all of the cafeterias in the new school will be fully compostable as well as there will be EV charging capabilities at all of the schools as well.
Mr. Orleans? There's a button on the top of that microphone. Is it green?
You need to suggest it?
I'll just project. Dr. House, I can't fault the current school administration for anything. But the, it was expressed by Mr. Washington, I think, that the system doesn't necessarily know what other elements of Prince George's County, like the planning department and the developers, are planning. And this came up many years ago. Somebody in your office, whether it need be a new position or just assigning some responsibility to someone in your office, needs to pay attention to what developments are being proposed and the number of units and the nature of the units and where they're going to be so that your other elements of your office can plan more realistically for future school sites based on some knowledge of what's in the pipe works as it relates, as it goes through the process from the planning department, the planning board, county council, district council. And ultimately, then you're faced with the need to cite, to house students, but you don't, you had no foreknowledge. So I'm just suggesting that that's something that if it's not done already, it should be done. And this was actually suggested many years ago, several superintendents in the past. I have a specific-
Thank you, thank you very much.
I have, I think it was Mr. Matlock, excuse me, I- I, I think it was Mr. Matlock, excuse me, I, I have a question about what Mr. Matlock said. Mr. Matlock, I believe, said that there are eight, uh, schools in, built, that are prepared to be built over the forthcoming years. Uh, I don't know about Spring Hill Lake specifically, or any of the other eight, but I do have a sense that not all of our schools are being built on the public private, private partnership model. Some are being built by the county itself. I'm just wondering if we can break that down, and if we're three or four years into public-private partnerships, if we have a, a, a better sense of, uh, what's better, uh, a school built by the county itself, or by engaging the private sector to build it for us, with the resultant loss of certain revenues.
Thank you, Mr. Orleans, please.
If Mr. Matlock could speak to that, or Dr. House, I'd appreciate it.
If you could step to the, the microphone. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
So, um, just to be clear, it, it's hard to say what's better or worse. Every, um, uh, the, when we originally went through this, this was intended to be a, a three-pronged stool, basically, for school development. Uh, one was gonna be, um, renovations for schools that had good bones. Another, uh, ver, another thing was to build traditional schools, and another was to build, um, P-three schools. Um, the P-three schools fit a certain, uh, element. They're, they're great for repeatable, smaller schools, or repeatable middle schools that where you build in a bundle, where you're gonna buy, use, um, uh, basically, um, build the same thing over and over and over again, uh, and use the same systems and the same ideas like that, the same everything. It helps you get through, um, D-PY faster, it helps you to move the process faster, um, and, and, and it's proven right now to be a very good process. But I will point out that we also had two middle schools built around the same time as our, um, as our P-three schools, and they're beautiful. They're in great shape, they're, they're, they're well-designed, and I think, um, everybody's happy with those schools as well. So it, it really is a depends. It, one is not necessarily better than the other. Um, I know for building high schools, P-three is really not what we want to do, because it's, they're, it's too expensive to build a high school, uh, using a P-three methodology. Um, but, um, but for middle schools and elementary schools, it turned out to be very good. But again, we've built some very good elementary and middle schools all around the same time, that are equally as good. So, I can't say that one system is better than the other. Um, it's just a little bit more efficient when you do it with the P-three, because of, uh, the, 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 the economies of scale.
Hey, thank you very much.
And if I could add, Mayor, just as first part of the question, uh, related to planning and understanding what developments are coming from a county planning board perspective, uh, Superintendent House has prioritized with our Department of Capital Programs, hiring planners. Uh, we've had, unfortunately, several years where our planners, we just haven't been able to find and hire, uh, those staff members, and they are responsible for building our educational facilities master plan, and making those connections that Mr. Washington talked about. So under Superintendent House's prioritization, we're moving forward with hiring planners, uh, in short order, to help, uh, shore that gap up.
Yeah, thank you so much.
And I'm guessing, because I'm, I'm, I'm assuming then, at that point, the disconnect that we're having right now with the communication with the planning board, that would be closed, too, because obviously, your planners would be, work closely with the, with the county planning department.
Yeah, that's what we're saying. We'll work to that end. Uh, it is a massive county. There is a massive amount of, of building that's going on, on the residential side, but they'll certainly work to connect, uh, with the county around future developments.
Yeah, the, the planning board should not be approving developments if there aren't adequate public facilities, which includes, you know, police and fire and schools. It's as simple as that. Uh, we need to pivot at this time, uh, with Mr., uh, you know, we've talked about, uh, Spring Hill Lake, the timeline. So now, I'd like to talk a little bit about the, uh, the transition, uh, the Dora Kennedy, uh, French immersion school, how, how the students, uh, at some point are going to be moved from Spring Hill Lake over there, and, uh, so, can we, uh, talk about that a bit?
Absolutely. Glad to, uh, to provide an update.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you so much. So, did you have some? Okay. Um, so our team is on track. Uh, Mr. Matlock did a great job of sharing the timeline for Spring Hill Lake Elementary School. Uh, so we're on track with our long-term plan, uh, for Dora Kennedy French immersion. Uh, in summer of 2026, uh, Dora Kennedy, Kennedy French immersion, I'll just call it DKFI for short, just to speed things up. Uh, we'll be transitioning from the old Greenbelt Middle School, uh, campus, uh, to the campus of Robert Goddard. Uh, currently, Robert Goddard is home to the Montessori School and to Phyllis T. Williams' Spanish immersion program, uh, that is co-located at Robert Goddard. Uh, currently, Robert, uh, uh, Phyllis T. Williams is currently being renovated, and they will be moving back to their original site this summer. So also, this summer, 2025, the current ten-classroom modular that's on-site at Robert Goddard will be broken down and relocated to Potomac Landing Elementary School. A new two-story, eighteen-classroom modular with elevator will be constructed in the same location as the original ten-classroom modular at Robert Goddard. That, this expanded modular will ensure we have adequate capacity to co-locate both Robert Goddard, French immersion, uh, uh, Montessori, as well as DKFI. Uh, the creation of the drawings and the completing of the permitting process started in fall of 2024 and is ongoing. The permitting approval process will conclude in fall of 2025, and construction will commence on the new modular. The projected timeline for completing construction on the eighteen classroom modular is spring of 2026. Dora Kennedy French immersion will relocate in summer of 2026 in time for school opening in the fall of 2026. The operations division will engage in community town halls each semester, uh, beginning this spring, uh, for the DKFI community. Uh, those updates will provide progress, uh, on the eighteen classroom modular construction, transportation, traffic safety planning, move management planning, et cetera. Uh, we're working collaboratively with the Area Two Office on the instructional side, uh, that supports both DKFI and Robert Goddard Montessori. The area office and principals , uh, provided an update that they wanted me to share. Uh, Principal Spence, who is at DKFI, and Principal Womack, who is at Robert Goddard Montessori, have already begun planning opportunities to strengthen community connections. As we approach school year 2526, both principals remain committed to prioritizing instructional and operational goals while fostering collaboration between school communities. In preparation for the co-location in fall 2026, they are proposing joint concerts, fall programs, field trips, and other student-centered events to build relationships. In summer 2026, both schools will host a back-to-school event to cultivate and celebrate their shared learning space while highlighting each school's signature program, in order to further strengthen community ties and collaboration.
Very good, very good. Hey, so, uh, fall of 2026, the students and faculty and staff from, uh, uh, Spring Hill Lake Elementary School will, will move to Dora Kennedy, to the, uh, historic, uh, Greenbelt Middle School. Uh, will there be any, uh, accommodations or renovations or improvements, temporary fixes or improvements to, uh, Dora Kennedy a, as the students come over, staff, administration from Spring Hill Lake?
So I would say that we will make the adjustments necessary to ensure that Spring Hill Lake is comfortable for the years that they'll be on-site. However, I think we've made it clear that, uh, the historic Greenbelt School, following the use for swing space for Spring Hill Lake Elementary School, uh, we don't have future uses outlined for that facility. So we're going to be very judicious in what we, uh, invest in the, into that facility.
Plan is two years is a, a swing site for the Spring Hill Lake, two years?
That is correct.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Hoppe, then Councilmember Pope.
Um, to that point, you know, I, I can't help but notice there's gonna be a hundred and fifty additional kids now that are gonna be in that building.
Which building?
In, in the Dora Kennedy, the current Greenbelt Campus, the current, old Greenbelt Middle School Campus, once, um, Spring Hill Lake comes over there, that's additional a hundred and fifty kids that are going to be in that space. So, I, I'm just, I do have concerns with everybody fitting in there. That's a lot of people. Um, and then I still do have some concerns over the facility, which I, you know, raised last year. Um, there's a lot of problems with the H-back in that building, and even this year, I've heard parents, you know, complaining that their kids are coming home sweating, they're getting headaches, they feel sick in school because the classrooms are so hot. So, it concerns me that we have another three and a half years of children in that school with no plans to fix those systems and update those systems.
And if I could.
If you like. Councilmember Pope.
Yeah, I wanted to tag on to that, because that would, my, my question was the same. I've worked in, um, in, in the middle school for ten years prior to my fifteen years in elementary school. But, um, so I know that the, the first floor and the second floor were somewhat renovated when, uh, the French immersion school came in, right? But the lower part did not. So I would assume, I mean, it, we, we toured it at some point, and it was in very bad shape when I left that school, and it was in very bad shape when we toured it, and, and I'm assuming that there are no renovations being done downstairs, uh, to date. So how are we gonna fit, how is Spring Hill Lake, all the student population plus the staff, how are we gonna fit on those two floors? So that, that would be, I just wondered how, how that's going to work, because we obviously can't utilize the down, the bottom floor.
And that's the floor that is adjacent to, uh, Greenbelt Road.
Right.
So, s- certainly, we will look at, as we get closer, um, because we're talking, I just described the domino effect of the different schools that we have to manage as far as, uh, the shifting of population. And so, we're still a ways out, uh, with respect to that accommodation of Spring Hill Lake. So we'll certainly plan to loop back and identify what adjustments we need to make to the site, whether it need to be additional temporaries, if they are required, uh, to ensure we can meet the needs of Spring Hill Lake or not, if we can meet that, them just from the building proper. Uh, but that's our commitment. But we have time to do that.
Just a, our, uh, S P department, or is our special education students, are they gonna come with us to the same school, the school, or are you planning on?
Yes, the plan is to move the entire Spring Hill Lake community. But, but I will say, but I will say, you do raise a good point, um, that, you know, we've had to be creative in certain instances, uh, with respect to how we accommodate populations. Uh, and in the past, we have looked at dividing up a particular school amongst different sites just for a temporary time, uh, while the construction's in place. If I think about, uh, this is an extreme example, uh, but under Phase One with Hyattsville Middle School, uh, they were actually co-located in three different campuses. That's not something that we're suggesting for Spring Hill Lake, but it's just the out-of-box, out-of-the-box thinking that we have to sometimes embrace for a short time to get to the goal of delivering the new, new school.
Uh, Councilmember Neesel.
Thank you. I also have a capacity question. Um, Phyllis T. Williams has three hundred and fifty-four students, according to records online, and, um, Dora Kennedy has about double that. I did hear you say that you were going to replace the ten-classroom modular with an eighteen-classroom modular. Does that mean, and I'm asking this question because we have a large population of Greenbelt students at Dora Kennedy, um, does that mean that Dora Kennedy will primarily be located in a modular unit? Are there plans to build a full school for them eventually? How, et cetera, et cetera?
So definitely appreciate that question. It's almost like I planted you to ask that. Um, so the current, uh, DKFI, I always, I average up, uh, uh, student population is seven hundred. The, uh, Robert Goddard Montessori is approximately five hundred. So if I add those to that, gives me twelve hundred. The state-rated capacity of the current Robert Goddard without the modular is approximately a thousand, nine hundred ninety-eight specifically. With the ten-classroom modular, you add two fifty of that, so now you're up to twelve fifty. So technically, we could have fit Robert Goddard and Dora Kennedy on the site without switching the modular, but that would have been very tight, right? And so, that's why we're shifting, moving the ten-classroom modular, building the eighteen-classroom modular, because now we have breathing room. That gives us a capacity for one thousand four hundred and fifty students for a population of twelve hundred. That's plenty of room. And it doesn't mean that one school is relegated to the modular, one school is relegated inside. They will be able to share. Uh, one of the things, if the academic side were here, they would talk about, uh, is the fact that when you get into the upper-level courses for the specialty programs on the middle school side, it becomes very difficult from a staffing challenge. And so they have to, this will actually help them, uh, to take certain courses together, uh, where they can maximize the use of their staff in a way that they can't when they're separated. So that doesn't mean that a Dora student never goes into building proper, a building proper student, or a Robert Goddard student never goes to the modular. We're working out in a thoughtful way, because they'll be sharing, co-locating on the campus.
I do appreciate that. I just find it rather curious that you're talking about two populations, that the cla, the classroom size, the school size isn't going to change, because those are programs where you have to, uh, get accepted into them. And you're talking about increasing capacity by an extra two hundred, but when it comes to schools that are actually over capacity, you are not discussing raising those. I just, I find that really curious, that you're providing this extra space to, to schools that are not going to grow to that capacity, because it is outside of their current limitation, like, what they actually accept into the schools.
So, one of the things that we want, I appreciate that. One of the things we wanted to do, um, because again, if you recall, a year ago, there was really a lot of consternation about moving DKFI. And so, our commitment at that time, and it continues to be today, is to provide a permanent solution that everyone can be comfortable with. And so, if that means invest, and we already had the modular in place, we don't have to do more just, uh, and we're using that current ten-classroom modular to actually address another situation in the South County. So putting a, another modular at the same site, but just making it bigger, um, isn't a heavy lift for us, and it works for both communities.
Okay. So it's a nod to those concerns. All right, thank you.
And if I could say, Dr. Coleman's not gonna toot his own horn. He has, since he's been here, he has looked at this process, and he said, wait a minute, we're gonna be back here next year having the same conversation if we do this. So he has pressed us to, uh, create more capacity than we may need to plan for the future, because we've put ourselves in that hole before, where, where it's not big enough. So we, we try to, every year, we have to grow another temporary, another temporary. Dr. Coleman is looking two, three years out, and that's how we got to where we are now, to get this, this new, uh, it building in here. So, he's not gonna give himself credit, that, but that's all, all Dr. Coleman, so.
Yeah. Appreciate that. Uh, Council.
My question wasn't about the, the facilities wasn't answered, so I'm hoping I can get an answer to the question about the, the inadequate, um, heating and cooling.
Or Greenbelt.
Yes, so, um, that's a challenge. It's, it's, it's one of our oldest, it's one of our oldest facilities. Um, we, uh, we don't have the funding, nor the ability to go in and renovate the facility, because it would be disruptive to the educational process. We would have to close that building for a long period of time. Our, our department is committed to continually, uh, do the repairs. It's just a matter of putting the resources in there to keep that building operated. It's got good bones. The renovation we did, uh, before, I, I have to tell you, I was on the other side of the house, but it was pretty much paint and floor tile. The mechanical equipment and all those things weren't done. But over the course of French immersion being there, we have had to replace and replace and replace. So we're constantly replacing equipment as we see it's, it's, um, we try to anticipate, to anticipate failure. When we have critical failure on a piece of equipment, and get out and refund of it. That's a steam school, so you're gonna get steam leaks, because the pipe, the pipe in that school is sixty, seventy years old. And that's where you get the heat, because as soon as they get a steam leak, that whole area is going to overheat. But we're typically in there that day, that evening, fixing that leak, and getting it back, uh, getting it back to where it needs to be again. But that is a constant issue in that building. But we, we will continue to, to maintain that facility to get us through these years, and put whatever resources we need.
And, and if I could just add, you know, this is a good example of why we have the, the approach that we have holistically as a school district to addressing our, uh, our aged facilities, right? The average building is forty years old. Superintendent House already shared that, uh, we have the second-oldest portfolio of over two hundred schools in the entire state. And so, if you think about Spring Hill Lake as an example, it has to be replaced. You think about, uh, uh, the historic Greenbelt, we're going to co-locate into Robert Goddard. That is a facility that was modernized through a full-staged renovation, in addition to a brand-new modular construction. So those children will be settled in a great facility for many years to come, and then we will step away from, uh, an old Spring Hill Lake and a old, or a historic, uh, Greenbelt Middle School. So it's, it's a painful process to get to, uh, but we're making progress in moving our children into state-of-the-art facilities.
Yeah, our, our time is running short. So, Councilmember McKinney, I believe you had your, your hand up.
Maybe it's just a, a quick request, in, because you may not be able to project this right now, but if you are.
But if you are anticipating any supply chain shortages with all the things that are happening, I guess the request is if the co-location of our students in that school, which is not really up to par, if you could communicate if that timeline shifts any further in more years as quickly as possible so that we can also help to communicate that to our families. Because we're, you're saying that they'll be there for two years, but if there are any challenges with construction, that could potentially go into another year that they're going to be in that building. So I think having the transparency and the communication as early as possible will be helpful, understanding that there are just so many things that you can't do if those things do happen.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for that. We're, okay.
I was, I was gonna say, we, we appreciate that. And and specifically with Spring Hill Lake, um, the way that the contract works, um, is that uh say for a force majeure or significant issue, they're liquidated damages of about a hundred thousand dollars a day if they miss. So we, you know, so there's a significant hammer where they're required to give us a lot of lead time on any of these issues. And so it won't be that we show up in May, it's like, oh, by the way, we won't be able to make it um, because that's the penalty that they have to deliver the schools on time. Um, and uh, so we, we will through uh PPCs and community meetings, uh, continue to uh, to bring that issue up. Um, I, I can say that um, just across construction right now, there's a whole lot of uh, we don't know what the tariffs are gonna do. So that, that's something that's been injected into now that supply chain is starting to get back. We, you know, and there's a lot of folks that are like, now, what does that look like with the tariff situation? And so we will communicate and have communicated with all of the, on all of our projects is that that is something that we are expecting them to get ahead of and we are expecting them to adjust as much as possible with the reality that, you know, this is still in flux. But that is something that has now been introduced. Yeah.
Hey, so I, I, I do wanna move on. I'd like to finish up in the next twenty minutes or so. So uh, there's, I didn't really see an online question. Who? Okay, uh, let's promote uh Ms. Dillon. Hey, good evening. Are you there? Anna, are you there?
Hi, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. I had a quick question about the plans for transportation for the incoming um and outgoing transport at the new campus for DKFI where there'll be two K eights sharing. I think it's a single driveway going in. I know that they have to use multiple entrances and exits currently to dismiss from DKFI onto Greenbelt Road and we've seen some uh congestion from that. So I was hoping that there's some update on the plans for the transportation at the um Goddard Campus.
So thank you so much for that question. Certainly, that's something that, uh, the transportation uh uh planning uh is something that we're looking at closely. That's a congested area uh because we've had co-located schools at Robert Goddard for several years now. And then you have Duval High School that's directly across the street. So there's definite constru- uh congestion that we have to manage. We have uh safe passage coordinators who are coming online with our school district uh in the coming weeks. Uh, and they, as a part of their responsibilities, will be assessing uh what we can do from a transportation perspective to help um make for an efficient uh arrival and dismissal process for uh students uh who have to enter and leave the campus, whether it be by bus or by car rider or or by car. Um, in addition to that, I know that uh because the catchment area for both schools is uh similar, uh, there'll be a certain amount of bus rider sharing uh that goes on between both schools as well. Uh, so again, we're committed to looking at uh what we can do to make for an efficient arrival and dismissal, but we certainly do recognize that that's a congested uh uh part of Good Luck Road.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. So uh tomorrow, there is a town hall meeting at uh Greenbelt Elementary School uh in regard to the uh ATS I designation. So is there anything you can share about that uh town hall that's happening? Will you all be there tomorrow?
Dr. Strater, any, any insights that we wanna share there? But you said, oh, specifically the school district gonna be there?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so it's, it's the PTA?
PTA is, I don't know, like the PTA and the school leadership's gonna be there. I don't know that the, the, the district's gonna be there.
Okay, I think, I think this may be an update specifically from the school administration to, to the community. So uh, we not, we may not have district personnel there, but the school is prepared to be able to share uh exactly what that designation is, what uh, what's to be expected from the community and, and next steps in terms of support.
Uh, and and quickly, uh, just in terms of this year or next year at Greenbelt Elementary School, what, what will that designation actually mean in terms of additional support? So is that something that would actually be happening this year?
So, uh, Dr. Strater, I'll let you come and share a little bit.
So for the ATS I schools, uh, unlike the CSI designation, there's no particular additional funding as far as resources are concerned. Uh, but the resources that are provided are more so aligned with the professional development, uh, with uh having more direct services from like the Office of Testing, Research and Evaluation for more data collaboratives, uh, to get more involved with the school to understand where they are in their data, where their focus areas. For this particular school, again, the identification was caused by special education. Uh, so for that school, you'll have the Special Education Office providing more direct supports. So a lot of this, uh, the ATS I designation is targeted with the hopes of preventing schools from further decline into the CSI designation. So it's more so trying to help the school with, with some minor course corrections and addressing that population and providing those supports. So the school should be aware, or I'm sure they are aware, their identification was from three years ago. So they're going through this process uh to understand what is needed. So they should be more than equipped to be able to support the conversations for tomorrow.
Appreciate that. Any questions, comments, Mr.? Yeah, could you please go to the microphone?
Mike, so they can hear you at home.
I have a quick question. When the school receives that designation, are they required to tell the, the families of that designation? Because we've been paying a close attention and we only received an email about that designation this year. Um, but I have heard recently that it is a longstanding designation, so I'm, I'm a little bit confused about that.
Um, I'll, I can get back to you and we can share the actual timelines of the designations. The designations occur every three years. Um, so we are going to next year be getting the next refresh list. Uh, so again, they're on three-year cycles. Um, as far as the requirements of notice, I am not sure regarding the ATS I. Again, I would need to get back to you. CSI and Title One, uh, there is notification requirements, but as far as ATS I, I am uncertain.
Thank you very much. So we, we spent a fair amount of time talking about uh Spring Hill Lake Elementary School and the French immersion school and the middle school. So I, I was just wondering if you could just give us a quick update on uh things at Roosevelt High School and perhaps Magnolia Elementary School. In particular, I know that overcrowding uh at uh, at Eleanor Roosevelt, uh, it's, it's a fact of life. And I, I think I counted, there's about twenty-four temporaries over there, but they've been there for fifteen years or so. So it's, it's like they're permanent, pretty much. So is there any talk about expanding or looking into the feasibility of, of uh growing the campus over there? At Roosevelt? Okay, any news about Magnolia?
Same thing.
Yes, please.
Um, I just wanted to um quickly, you, you mentioned the Safe Passage Program, which I think is fantastic. I love that program. And we would love to have that here in Greenbelt. Like, we really, we have a lot of walkers here. We really need that Safe Passage Program, especially in our middle school. Um, we, we would love to have, you know-
So just to clarify, Safe Passage Coordinators?
Yes.
Okay, so we have two Safe Passage Coordinators who have recently been hired and their primary responsibility and their fall under uh uh Safety and Security Services under Director Cunningham, who's here to my right. Uh, but their primary, primary responsibility will be working to establish safe passage routes for students and staff uh and the community. Uh, they'll work with Department of Public Works and Transportation, State Highway Administration, uh, county government uh uh to make recommendations, collect data, uh, provide feedback to our transportation department around what we can do uh to provide the safest routes for children. Uh, and they'll be working throughout the entire system.
That's great. Well, I'm very excited for that because we definitely, we really have a, a, a great need for that. So um, I really appreciate it.
It is good news. Hey, so I might have to close things out briefly, just having a little discussion about um just the state of affairs in, in the world, the, the policies, the executive orders, the, the possible elimination of the Department of Education. And uh, in short term, uh, with the state legislature, uh, with the prospect of them uh not funding the blueprint as much as had been committed to in the past, that's downstairs, right? So uh, yeah. So what about that with the, it is time to go, with the blueprint legislative matters? Can you, uh, are there some bills that you're looking at or just in terms of the state legislature?
So most recently, uh, I, along with uh a number of other superintendents, um, took time to, to be in Annapolis on a, on a couple of different occasions to testify. Uh, and to, to really testify around the importance of uh being fully funded uh for, for the blueprint specifically. Uh, so we are, you know, uh, letting our voices be known that this is important to the fabric of what we do in public education in Maryland. We know that, uh, you know, many years ago, Maryland was, uh, quite frankly, uh, one of the top five um states in terms of public education in the country. Um, uh, there has been recent data that showed, uh, you know, as of about four years ago that we were ranked fortieth in a particular area. That has risen to twenty this past year. But in order to keep that momentum headed in the right direction, um, we can't back up in terms of the funding. We have to continue the momentum moving forward. Um, so we're making that point uh at the state legislature. I think a number of our delegates uh hear us uh clearly. Uh, but ultimately, uh, what we know is that this boils down to, to where, uh, where the governor is and where the legislature votes. Um, so we're hoping that um, we don't see the kind of um backwards direction in terms of opportunities and funding that we know can make a difference in public education. Now, you spoke a little bit about, you know, the national state of affairs, uh, the Department of Education as well. What we know is that there's been a lot thrown against the wall right now, but there hasn't been specific guidance to go along with what that looks like. Uh, so versus making predictions, uh, we are putting some contingency plans in place and that's a part of why we have developed our federal transition task force. So we meet on a weekly basis to take a look at the, the different executive orders, uh, to take a close look at uh what's being said, what's being done. Uh, so we are contingency planning, but until we get that specific guidance of, you know, whether block grants will be offered for special education, whether, you know, uh, there's gonna be a specific process in reference to DEI, whether there's going to be uh changes in what happens in reference to Title Nine. Um, uh, we're still up in the air in terms of what that guidance looks like. But we are prepared to, to shift and make changes if we have to. But what's most important is that we continue providing the kind of education that will show the kind of progress that we're seeing most recently.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. So much uncertainty and I'm sure that you're looking into contingencies and vulnerabilities as far as federal funding, but it sounds like this task force is really uh quite intensive. So-
Correct.
Yeah. Uh, Councilmember?
I just, I just wanted to mention, you know, um, Ms. Superintendent House mentioned the governor's bill that um walks back um some of the funding in the blueprint. Now, it doesn't cut it entirely. It just is walking it back a little bit. And the county most affected by that is Prince George's County, uh, maybe second slightly to Montgomery County. But just in our community alone, between FY twenty-six and FY thirty-three, that would be about more than two million dollars less funding coming to our schools here, just in Greenbelt. So just wanna make you aware, if you feel so moved to write a letter or reach out um to your governor, to your legislators, please do so, um, because those, those funds directly impact our students in our community. So that's what I'll say about that.
Right. So at this time, I'd like to, to thank you, Dr. House, and thank you for your, your staff here for uh spending a little time with us and answering some difficult, challenging questions. We're in challenging times right now. Uh, to, to have a dialogue, to be able to, to speak with you face to face and to uh get answers and to share some of our concerns is very, very important to us.
Well, Mayor, uh, to you and the council, we uh appreciate uh you all uh continuing to fight uh for Greenbelt and uh in this district as a whole. Uh, we know uh that we can't do this alone and we appreciate partners like you and ensuring that our students get what they need in terms of their education.
Thank you so much. Uh, Councilmember Pope?
Yeah, I also wanted to thank you for coming out and it was so nice to meet you because I wasn't here last year when you came. And thank you to your team for attending tonight and answering our questions as best as you can. Um, I think it's very important that we always have always honest and open discussions and communication. I think the communication flow is very important to us, as is to you. And I just, you know, just wanted to say that one more time, you know, Greenbelt students like to go to Greenbelt schools. So we really wanna keep our students in our Greenbelt schools. So I, I think I'm, with everything that was said, I know there is no boundary change coming in the next year, as you said, but um my ears tingled a little bit. So when you said, you know, it's some years out, so I just want, especially with Roosevelt High School. So um, I just wanted to say that one more time, you know, Greenbelt students in Greenbelt schools. So thank you.
Thanks for putting a pen in that. It's, it's something that we are very, very concerned about. So, no, thank you so much. Really appreciate all you do. And uh, of course, this has been recorded, so it'll be available on YouTube, uh, so people uh who are not here in the room will be able to, to look and, and uh see what's been said here. So we really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. You guys take care.
Thank you so much.
And since there's no discussion items, I think that's the end of the work session.
Good night, good night.